Smile. Thank you.
Well, we've got a speaker.
That's our favorite part of meetings.
Now we got to reorganize, reconfigure. Well, now they clear out.
Give people a chance to clear out for a moment.
Thank you.
Technology. All right. Now, let everybody go. We will continue on, council. So we'll continue on with the agenda, which means we move back up to number four on the agenda, comments from the public. This is the first public comment period. I'll ask the clerk if anyone signed up for the first public comment period.
No, sir.
Okay, council. Since no one signed up, we'll close that part of the meeting and move on to reports. Any questions or comments from council on reports? Hearing none. As you can see, there is no old business tonight, so we'll move to new business. And under new business, we've already taken care of items one and two. So we move to item three under new business, which is consideration of approval to award the contract to Yarborough Construction in the amount of $101,900 for the construction of two law enforcement center outbuildings. So I'll call the administrator to give us some details on this, please.
Thank you. These two buildings will be located near the animal control facility on the law enforcement center site. One will be used to house vehicles and one will be used for maintenance equipment. That is a large site that will require a lot of lawn maintenance equipment and so forth. Yarborough Construction was the low bid. They have now completed two structures for us, and we're very satisfied with their performance. These two buildings will be paid for out of the plutonium funds for the law enforcement center. So we recommend awarding this bid to Yarborough Construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Questions or comments from council?
Will these buildings be air-conditioned later on or need to?
So one of them will store surplus vehicles. Obviously, it will not need that. The maintenance building will have a provision to add an office if need be, but the maintenance person has an office in the law enforcement center itself. So it's primarily for lawn mowers, yard equipment, and so forth.
Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there a motion to award this contract to Yarborough Construction?
Some movement, chairman.
Mr. Talbot makes the motions. There are second.
Second.
Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, under new business is number four, consideration of approval to award the contract to Talbot Tennis in the amount of $152,588 for the construction of two pickleball courts and basketball court resurfacing located at Bettis Park and two pickleball courts located at Sweetwater Park. Again, I'll ask the administrator to take us through some of these details, please.
Thank you. Talbot Tennis was the low bid to construct two pickleball courts and resurface the double basketball court at Bettis Park. This will be paid for out of the earmark, the state appropriation for Bettis Park as part of our completing that park. We're more than halfway done now. They also gave the low bid to construct two pickleball courts at Sweetwater Park, and that money is allocated from the American Rescue Plan funds. The budget we just closed out had that as an appendix item. So as such, we recommend awarding this bid to Talbot Tennis. They do have all the certifications as court builders that we would require.
Questions or comments from council?
Are we familiar with their work?
We have called their references, and they gave good references. But we were advised by our engineers who have constructed parks like this or bid out parks to make sure they had certain certifications, and this particular group fit that.
Other questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there a motion to award this contract to Talbot Tennis?
So moved.
Dr. Kenyon makes the motions. There are second.
Second.
And Ms. Ireland seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, under new business, number five, consideration of approval to award the contract to Corsica in the amount of $96,456 for county information and technology and cybersecurity services. Again, I'll ask the administrator to walk through these details, please.
So Corsica was the low bid to provide IT services as well as cybersecurity services for Edgefield County. We did have a bumpy road with them in the past. They've made significant staffing changes, and our IT director has worked very well with them recently. He's convinced that they are the best bidder here. He's happy with their work lately. This is a necessary and an annual budgeted item. It was just approved, and our budget is something we have to do, server maintenance, cybersecurity. Because they gave us the most complete and lowest bid, we do recommend going with Corsica.
Okay. Questions or comments from council?
Do we have any recourse if the road gets bumpy again with them?
Breach of contract. We could enforce that.
Would it be written in there that we have a way out? If we had the same trouble we had last time?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Other questions or comments from council?
I have noticed a difference with them. I remember we were having lots of issues, but we have not had those issues in a while. So I... And it was just staffing? That was just the major problem with staffing?
I think it was personalities, for the most part, and the fact that we didn't have an employee in IT who spoke the same language. You know, maybe there was a difficulty in communicating needs. There was also a transition in administrators and just a lot of staffing changes. I think a lot contributed to the issues. The county was probably responsible for some, Corsica responsible for more. But I think they've all been resolved now.
Other questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there a motion to award this contract to Corsica?
So moved.
Ms. Ireland makes the motions. There are second.
Second.
Mr. Talbot seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is number six on the agenda, consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance 2324004, and ordinance amending the tri-county solicitor's budget to add an additional $170,321 in revenue from the tri-county solicitors fund and $170,321 in expenditures for salaries and benefits. So I'll ask the administrator first what he might have for us on this one.
Thank you. The solicitor's office has requested a prosecutor to primarily serve Edgefield County. They have previously unspent funds in their account, meaning they were under budget over the last several years. So they do have the funds to pay for this, but they do need council's approval to do so, to amend the budget. So we believe Edgefield County will benefit from a local prosecutor, so we recommend approval.
Okay, and our solicitor is here tonight, so I just wanted to recognize him. If there's anything you'd like to tell us tonight, Mr. Hubbard, you're welcome to.
Thank you. I'm Rick Hubbard, solicitor. Thank y'all for having me here. I'm really excited about the possibility of bringing a new hire like Ms. Hubbard to Edgefield County. You hear so much about Lexington County. We bring a lot of our folks from there to here to prosecute cases. This will be somebody who's got a decade of experience with violent cases, is used to working in that courtroom, and she lives here. She'll be a part of this community, and to me, that's a huge blessing because I get to really see what's going on, and it helps us as we navigate cases. And right now, just so you know, the docket here in this county is one of the most efficient in South Carolina. We've exceeded all benchmarks by our Supreme Court, set out and moving our cases. And I want to keep that, but also make sure that our jails don't get clogged up with violent cases, that we have somebody that can be on the front end and move things more rapidly. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But thank you, Mr. Hubbard.
Thank you. While you're here, Mr. Solicitor, I will say we're building a new law enforcement center, and it'll be finished, and we'll start putting residents in it beginning in January, probably, give or take a month. And so I just say I hope you can keep it efficiently moving so that we don't have backup in our new prison.
That's the goal.
But we appreciate that. Thank you. With that, council, any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to give first reading to ordinance 2324004?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbot makes the motions. There are second.
Second.
Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance number 2324005, and ordinance amending chapter 32 of the Edgefield County Council ordinances nuisances. Again, I will turn it over to the administrator to take us through this one, please.
Thank you. We are recommending two primary changes to our nuisance ordinance. The first is to simplify language in the noise portion of the ordinance to make it clearer. The second is to prohibit burning in proximity to public outdoor activities, as well as the burning of items that should be disposed of in another way, items that would cause notches of smoke and so forth. And we're particularly concerned about these activities that would be going on near school sporting events, church events, things of that nature.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council?
You took the two words out that we talked about earlier, paper and cardboard?
I have not. They are coming out for the second reading.
Okay, okay. There's two words in there, two products that I was called about once this hit. The paper and cardboard is not going to be allowed to be burned, and that's two products that you just about need to have a fire. So... But David's going to take care of that one in the next reading.
Councilman Moody rightly pointed out, you oftentimes use paper to start your fire, so we probably shouldn't exclude that. We're more concerned about things that make smoke that would impair people with breathing issues, plastics, tires, things of that nature. We're not trying to, you know, to over-regulate anything here.
While we're talking about redoing the nuisance statute, and I see Doc smiling already. Okay. We have some people wanting a light ordinance. You may be familiar with this. There are other towns and cities in the state of South Carolina that have a light ordinance, your light shining into other people's property. And so we've had a couple of complaints on my section of the county, and so Doc is working on it, so hopefully we can incorporate that somehow or another with the sheriff's department's help and get that resolved also.
Any other questions or comments from council on this ordinance? Hearing none. Is there a motion to give first reading to ordinance number 2324005?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbot makes the motions. There are second.
Second.
Mr. Moody seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is number eight under new business, consideration of approval of the grand award agreement with the South Carolina Department of Commerce Coordinating Council for Economic Development on behalf of U.S. Fibers, a division of Pactail Group, Inc. Again, I'll ask the administrator to help us understand this one.
Thank you. Edgefield County will serve as a pass-through for the disbursement of $350,000 of grant funds from the South Carolina Department of Commerce. These monies are coming to U.S. Fibers for their building expansion. And we... There's no cost to the county. We will simply receive the funds as the project is certified as complete. We will then disperse that same amount of money to U.S. Fibers. So we recommend approval. This is a common economic development incentive program.
Questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there a motion to provide the pass-through of this money for U.S. Fibers? Ms. Ireland makes the motion, and I'll be happy to second it. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That ends new business. Council will move to the second public comment period. I'll ask the clerk if anyone signed up. And for anyone who's speaking, remember there's a five-minute limit to the speaking, and the clerk will tell us when you're at four minutes and at five minutes. So with that, we do have one person who has signed up. Mickey, have... You had to pronounce your last name for me. I can't read it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Mickey Averitt. I appreciate y'all allowing me to talk. I'm from the west side of Edgefield. My wife, Pam, and I live on a property with some acreage there. We and some of our neighbors had a real wake-up call with the mining operation of Woodlow. Our property is very similar to Woodlow. And as I say, this was a wake-up call. We never dreamed anything like this could happen. We went to the planning committee. Emotions were high, perhaps too high. But anyone who listened to what was said at the meeting walked away with the understanding that the planning committee has no authority to stop anything like a mining operation, a high-density cattle operation, high-density goat, pig, you name it type operation, which can effectively destroy a community. We have no zone. We are surrounded by counties in this state and other states who have zones. They are preventing these undesirable industries from coming into their counties. And guess where they're going to come? And believe me, they will be coming. The Planning Commission is working on a new zoning plan. I've looked at portions of it. It certainly does not, as far as my area or our area of the county, it has no impact that I can see on what anyone is doing at this time. It does have safeguards. I just ask that when this comes up, the consideration, that y'all consider it seriously. I mean, the future of this county is in y'all's hands. This county, I mean, it's a wonderful county. I moved up here twenty-five years ago, and we would all love for it to stay just as it is. But we... You know, I'm eighty years old. I will assure you that you can't stop change, and change is coming. With change, either you... It's desirable or undesirable, organized or disorganized. And brother, it is coming. So I'm asking that y'all give serious consideration to this when it does come up, because I think it's going to make the difference as to whether this is a county where people want to raise kids, families, or is it going to be a county that is a dumping ground for industry that the counties around us don't want and can stop? Thank you, man.
Thank you. Okay, council, no one else signed up for this public comment period, so I will close it, and we'll move to reports from county council members. Does any county council member have any report tonight?
I just... It's not a report, but I just like to revert back to the first resolution that took place tonight, and I just think it shows cooperation between the three agencies we have now, fire, EMS, and sheriffs, that we didn't have ten years ago, eight years ago, or five years ago. So this county is very lucky to have what we do have, and they work together very, very well throughout the whole county.
Thank you. Any other council member have anything tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that we noticed that they had finished, completed their work at intersection of 378 and Kalason Highway and the Walker Road. We noticed that in the... In the past, it had been so... A lot of accidents have been happening at that intersection. They have completed and it looks good, and there's no way now that they have many accidents that they normally have been having. Only thing I could see, I stopped by there and observed about thirty minutes the other day, that they're still not stopping at those stop signs. And that they done completed the road, but they have... They just slow down, they don't stop, and I think Tiffany can witness that here. So we are very appreciative of the Upper Savannah Council and the DTO helping us get that resolved. We'd like to thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. If there's no other reports, then we'll move to the report by the county administrator.
Thank you. On Bettis Park, the irrigation is being installed on the reconstructed baseball field. I think the lights will be coming in in the next week or two. The field will then be sprigged and fertilized and dugouts added. With council's approval of the pickleball courts, we believe this park will be complete by early fall. The recreation department is offering a soccer camp July eighth through eleventh at the Edgefield... Town of Edgefield Soccer Field. Phil Ireland will be the lead, and he will be assisted by recreation staff and high school soccer players and a couple of recreation soccer coaches. We're very excited about that. I think we have approximately thirty kids signed up, so that's... That's really good. Our county archives is now open from 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. to accommodate the public. It is located in the back of the administration building at 124 Courthouse Square. A lot of people come in to do plat research, probate research, genealogical research, and Tanya Guy is very helpful. She has a lot of volunteers that we're lucky to have as well. I was contacted by Reverend Armfield of Moore's Community Church in Edgefield. He called to tell me that they had a mortgage burning on June 23rd for the Moore's Empowerment Center. That's located near Highway 25 and Bosquet Street, and we congratulate them on this. This is certainly a cause of celebration, so very happy about that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Any questions for the administrator from council?
No, but I would like to say we need to thank the sheriff's office for being so accommodating with our camps this summer. Mayweather Fire Department had a two-week camp these past two weeks in which SROs also participated in that, and then, of course, the sheriff is allowing participation with this upcoming camp. And so we really do appreciate the working together with the sheriff's department on these camps, because it takes a whole village to put these things on, and I appreciate it.
I certainly agree with that.
Please thank the sheriff. I know he couldn't be here tonight, but please pass that along. Anything else for the administrator? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move to the chairman's comments. I just have a few items to mention tonight. First, I do want to congratulate all those who were re-elected in the June primary. It looks like we all will continue to serve together, so I look forward to that. Also, we are now in a new fiscal year with our newly passed budget taking effect on July one. Every year, we try to improve many areas of the budget, and this year is no exception. So I look forward to that. Finally, I want to mention that I hope all our citizens have a joyful and safe Independence Day, either celebration or quiet time, whichever they choose. And council, with there being no other business to conduct tonight, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And Ms. Ireland makes the motion. Dr. Kenyon, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. We are...